It is six o'clock and we will call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. We'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you for coming. I've asked Commissioner Booker to give our invocation and Commissioner Fendig to lead us in the pledge. If you'd stand, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, come before you once again with bowed heads and an humble heart, thanking you for this day. Thanking you for waking us up this morning, Heavenly Father, in our right minds, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we ask that you put a hedge of protection around those who protect us, Heavenly Father, our first responders, our military, their families, Heavenly Father. And Heavenly Father, tonight, we ask that you dwell with us, Heavenly Father. Provide us to help us to provide the right decisions for this community, Heavenly Father. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Do you will join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Mr. Chairman, before we start the meeting, we have one item to be deferred from the agenda. Make a motion to defer item number thirty-eight, Commissioners. Consider amending the Water Resources Protection Ordinance as outlined with changes to become effective October the fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, to the May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise a right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, sir. This is our public comment period. And I think we have one speaker to come before us tonight. If you would come to the podium, state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Laura Carana. I'm here tonight representing a better Glenn to reiterate the public's interest in the ongoing process of hiring a new chief for the GCPD. The citizens of Glenn County are invested, as you should be too, in making sure this hiring process is fair, transparent, and free from cronyism, so that this very important job goes to someone who is qualified and experienced enough to turn this department around, not just someone who is conveniently geographically located here or who you happen to know already. As you know, we insisted that an outside organization be involved in the hiring process because if it were up to you, the GACP would be the only voice involved in picking the chief, the same organization that the late Carl Alexander served as vice president. But we need fresh eyes and a fresh perspective at the GCPD. And I've stood here before and given you some examples of why that is. And tonight, a year and a day after we all first saw the cell phone footage of Ahmaud Arbery's lynching, I'm going to add to that list. There is a history and an ongoing problem with GCPD officers behaving in ways that are callous, divisive, and inappropriate in public. And there are allegations of serious misconduct in private that I won't even get into tonight. Officer Brandon Condo, for example, has built a brand for himself on YouTube, Facebook, and other social media outlets, giving his take on policing. He currently has over six hundred thousand subscribers on YouTube, and he draws a salary from that online presence and related merchandise sales on top of his GCPD pay, which, by the way, I hope someone has looked into his use of county-issued weapons and gear in making videos to make money off of them. And I know from an open records request that I received that you've been made aware of some of his problematic posts in the past. But apparently, nothing has come of that because this was several months ago and he's given us plenty of new examples since then. Officer Condo regularly mocks people who describe his views as racist. Is that the kind of public attitude we want from an officer serving in the same department that has Ahmaud Arbery's blood on their hands? He regularly boasts that people call for his resignation as a police officer just because they pay taxes. That doesn't sound like the attitude of a public servant to me. And recently, on a public Facebook post about the Little League opening day ceremonies that were happening over in St. Simons, Officer Condo commented that one of his fellow officers looked like he was posing for OnlyFans. Now, since you're all fine-upstanding gentlemen, you probably don't know what OnlyFans is. But I'm not a fine-upstanding gentleman, so I'll tell you. It's a website where people can upload and subscribe to amateur pornography. I'm not sure how his mind made the leap from Little League to porn, but as the mother of two young children in this community, I find it deeply disturbing that he would make that comment in a public forum, especially given his role in our community. Some other quotes from his recent videos include, "I like my women like I like my patrol cars," dirty, and also a video of him drawing a picture of a penis on the window condensation of his county-issued patrol car. Now, I would rather be doing just about anything than standing up here talking to you about porn and penises, but I'm repeating something that a current GCPD officer has posted in his public social media posts. Our department is quite literally a laughingstock, and I'm frankly surprised that he's still employed as a police officer. Now, I'm not making a point about morality here. I'm not here to nitpick our police officers' personal opinions or what they do on their own personal time or on their private social media accounts. My point is that this attitude of being untouchable, of publicly and brazenly being unprofessional and unaccountable to whatever standards of behavior are either not in place at the GCPD at all or are not being enforced, this kind of attitude is unacceptable. It's a symptom of a much deeper problem. The GCPD has repeatedly shown itself to be primarily concerned with protecting itself to the detriment of the safety and well-being of the public. It has repeatedly shown us that it cannot be counted on to hold its own officers accountable. And it's already been sued several times for this exact kind of dysfunctional and dangerous culture. For these reasons and many more, we need to seize this opportunity now to bring in strong, fresh, outside leadership. We know what needs to be done. You have a roadmap for what needs to be done to turn this department around. It's laid out in the one hundred and fifty-four-page-long report from the IACP that you received almost three years ago now. I'm requesting that this commission provide regular updates to the public on this hiring process, including whether any candidates have been identified, whether or not those candidates are currently employed by the GCPD or have ever been in the past, and where they are in the hiring process. I want to thank you for your service to our county because we're relying on you to bring in a GCPD chief who will get the job done, who will implement the IACP recommendations, who will restore the reputation of this department, and restore the trust between the GCPD and the communities it serves. Glenn County deserves better, and we're demanding better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Carana. At this time, we'd like to present a proclamation to thank Pete Correll for his contributions to Glenn County. And if you would indulge me as I read this, I would very much appreciate it. This is a proclamation recognizing Pete Correll for his contributions to Glenn County. Whereas, A.D. Pete Correll is a native of Brunswick, Georgia, born April twenty-eighth, nineteen forty-one. He came from humble beginnings, working at the family-owned men's store. And whereas Pete graduated from high school from Glenn Academy and went on to attend Georgia Tech on a golf scholarship, he continued his education at the University of Georgia and eventually received his master degrees from the University of Maine. And whereas Pete has been a tireless worker on behalf of this state and his community and a constant advocate for Georgia in matters large and small. Pete's kindness and generosity is unsurpassed. He is the chairman of his own organization, the Correll Family Foundation. His diligent efforts secured the financial stability of Grady's health system, and in return, the hospital named the Correll Pavilion in his honor. And whereas Pete's desire to benefit the local community was made clear when he chose to invest in education with the naming of the Correll Center for Teaching Education and Learning at the College of Coastal Georgia. And whereas the Correll Scholars Program at the Communities of Coastal Georgia Foundation awards Glenn County High School graduate scholarships to pursue their higher education. And whereas Pete, along with his wife, Ada Lee, donated two million dollars for the teen center at the Boys and Girls Club of Southeast Georgia, which was named in honor of Pete's late mother, Elizabeth F. Correll. And whereas the list of awards and accomplishments Pete has received for his charitable acts are too numerous to count, his philanthropic efforts continue to make significant impacts on organizations throughout the Golden Islands. In the most recent endeavor, his organization has donated five hundred thousand dollars to Hand in Hand of Glenn and a matching grant to help fund the construction of a tiny home village for the homeless in Glenn County to improve the lives of those most vulnerable. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Glenn County Board of Commissioners that it is hereby recognizing Pete Correll for his dedication, hard work, generosity, and valuable contributions to the Glenn County community. Witness this day, the sixth of May, two thousand and twenty-one, Wayne Neal, Chairman, Glenn County Board of Commissioners. We would like to present this at this time. Is the family? Any of the family here tonight? Okay. All right. We will make sure that he gets this and... Bill, would you have anything to say?
Well, I'd just say Mr. Correll is gravely ill, and he has been a stalwart in this community forever. And he, I don't think there are enough things that we could say about him that would do justice to what he's done. His hand and his presence has been in just about every corner of this community. And we're just very blessed that Pete Correll was born right down the street here and chose to be such an integral part of this community. So we wish he and his wife well, and I don't know exactly what the medical state is right now, but he is, he is, I understand that hospice has been, had been called. So our prayers are with the family. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll receive a report on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Audit. Mr. Mayor Munson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tamara Munson, interim CFO for Glenn County. You have before you two books tonight. The first book that looks like this is our draft budget for fiscal year twenty-two. I'm not going to be speaking on this tonight, but I just wanted to let you know it's there for you to look through, and it is also going to be posted on our website before the end of tonight for the public to be able to look through. So that's there. Let us know if you have any questions. My presentation tonight is on our fiscal year two thousand and twenty Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which we refer to as a CAFER. And that is the second book. This is a much more fun book to read. I think you all will really enjoy it. As you know, we typically, our fiscal year ends on June thirtieth, so June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. And the state gave everyone an automatic extension this year due to COVID. Auditors were behind. Local governments were behind. So this is actually for fiscal year twenty, which ended June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. We're about to start a new audit in a couple of months. So we're glad to have this one put to bed finally. All right. So we received an unmodified, which is opinion, on our financial statements, which is a clean opinion. That means that our financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with GAAP, which is generally accepted accounting principles. which is generally accepted accounting principles in the United States. We did have one finding in our audit, which was related to the collapsing of our Internal Service Funds. As you all remember, in fiscal year '20, we significantly changed the way that our funds were structured, and we closed our Internal Service Funds and put those into the General Fund. All of this happened during the transition between the former CFO and myself coming back. And so the entry that was made to close the service funds was made directly to fund balance and posted, took it out of Internal Service and put it into the General Fund through fund balance, and it should have been done through a transfer in and out. So there was no actual cash involved, there was no chance for any missing monies, it was just simply the accounting entry was done incorrectly. So this is a once-in-probably-my-lifetime-type-of-transaction. We don't change our fund structure that often. This was an entry I've never made before, and the other accountants had not either. So that's what this finding resulted from. It has been corrected, everything is fixed in the audit, and it is correctly reported. So that was our only finding this year. We also had a single audit, which looks at all of our federal awards, and we received an unmodified, clean opinion on our single audit, and there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified. Our governmental funds ending total fund balances for fiscal year '20, our General Fund ended at $58.7 million. As you know, of that 58, we have a $30 million designated rainy day fund. Then there's about $1 million that was committed to other purchase orders and inventory prior to the final, and then the $27 million is what's left in undesignated fund balance at the end of fiscal year '20. The way we got to that fund balance, I'll go over in a few minutes. SPOLOST 2016, we ended with $27.8 million in fund balance left in that fund, and then all of our non-major funds, which were 20 other funds, make up the other $27 million. We have proprietary funds. The airport is our largest proprietary fund, and that is not managed by the county finance department. They have their own finance department and their own board, but because they were created by the county through a ordinance, I believe, they fall in our CAFR legally, so that is why they are there. Our proprietary funds are a solid waste fund with $1.9 million, and then we have a couple of small, non-major proprietary funds. And then finally, our pension trust fund ended the year at $108 million. I know you can't see this, but this is really in here if anyone wants to go back and look at it later. This is a listing of all of our individual funds and their ending fund balances and the breakdown for fiscal year '20. This is a fund balance history of our General Fund. As you can see, the blue column there is our committed rainy day fund, and we had it up over $30 million, and then it dropped down through some of the hurricanes, and we've built that back up in 2020. We're at $30 million. The green is our undesignedated, and so we were in 2016 here around $8 or $9 million, and we've been slowly building that up over the last few years. The last three years, we have had some significant cost controls implemented by the county manager and also very conservative revenue budgets, because this past year, we didn't know what was going to happen with COVID. So we've earned about $5 million a year over the last three years in undesignedated fund balance in the General Fund. This is a breakdown of where we collect our revenues from. So our major revenue sources are 41% in property taxes, 41% in sales and other taxes, and then everything else makes up the remainder. And this is a breakdown of our expenditures in governmental activities. This past year, we spent 46% on public safety, 19% on public works, 13% on general government, and then the rest is broken down between judiciary, housing and development, culture and recreation, health, and long-term debt interest. So that's all I have for you tonight. I tried to condense a 180-page report into just a few minutes, so this is available for you all. I'm available to answer any questions you may have as you look through it, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have tonight.
Commissioner.
Tamara, I know for several months you've beaten yourself up about this audit, particularly having to get extensions, but in light of the issues of this past year, not the least of which was the pandemic and software conversion, fund structure, and you wouldn't say this, but I will, a couple of personnel issues that aren't with us anymore, and I think that, and with one finding, which I would consider to be semantics, and I don't know anything about modified accruals or full accruals or all that, but it looks like semantics from a layman's perspective. I think your team has done an incredible job, and Judy, all of you have worked together to pull this thing together in the worst of circumstances, so...
Thank you.
Congratulations on that.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, too. I mean, you and your team have done a great job in pulling this together under extraordinary circumstances, so thank you very much for doing that. I think it's, normally, we would have gotten this December 31, but because of the extensions, we're way into this fiscal year to be able to see what actually happened in 2020. So appreciate all your hard work, and thank you.
Thank you.
And I, too, would echo that. In combination of getting this audit ready, you've also worked endless hours on getting the next budget ready, so I want to thank you for that, and all the department heads that have contributed to it, the staff, all the questions that you've answered from all the commission questions, and the work that has gone into preparing the fiscal year '22 budget. So thank you for your work, your dedication, and all the people in your department and our department heads for what they've brought forward to get us to where we are.
Thank you. We appreciate them, and definitely couldn't do it on my own. It takes a team, so I appreciate the comments. And I will say that my goal is to never have to give out a budget and audit on the same night again.
We'll support you in that. All right. Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you very much. We'll move now to our public hearing. There are a number of them tonight. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated, and your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Our first item tonight, item number three on the agenda, is ZM 4635-93 Benchmark Way Rezone. Consider a request to amend the existing planned development district, ZM 1721, which is the Ballard Plaza PD. The district is located at 93 Benchmark Way. The rezoning will revise the number of required parking spaces for proposed medical office use and will amend the district's site plan. Parcel ID 03-04848, Howard Eschram Venergy Group LLC applicant and owner. Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Again, this is a rezone request to amend the existing PD text, to amend the parking requirements, and a revision on the site plan. This is an existing building, and they are converting that building to a Veterans Affairs community-based outpatient clinic and adding some additional structures on the site. And this is, for your information, it's across Old Jessup from Ballard Park, just to know where it is. They do want to prepare the site to become the new VA community-based outpatient clinic. They want to amend the requirements so that they will be, can be in compliance with the parking requirements, and the site has 69 existing spaces. Under that ordinance, they would need 134, and in talking with the applicant and staff about their plans for this, staff does believe that the current parking is adequate. VA has provided a letter stating that the 100 spaces would be sufficient, also states that they have some comparisons to existing clinics throughout the area. This is the site plan, the aerial, I apologize, the aerial with the local zoning. Photograph of the existing building. This is the new site plan to accompany this planned development text. The Mainland Planning Commission voted six to zero at its April 13 regular meeting to recommend that you all approve this rezoning. Here are your possible actions this evening and a possible motion to approve application ZM 4635 as presented. I'm available, and I believe the applicant's agent is available this evening if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Commissioners, before we open the public hearing, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will open this for public comment. If there is anyone here that wants to speak in opposition to this zoning request, would you come forward? Any opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, is there any that wants to speak in favor of this zoning request? Any to speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on this item, and Commissioner, it's back to you.
Move to approve application ZM 4635.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise the right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item number four is ZM 4642, 145 Bell Cut Off Road Rezone. Consider a request to rezone a 10-acre portion of 145 Bell Cut Off Road from Forest Agricultural Zoning District to the Medium Residential Zoning District. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property in order to construct a proposed 72-unit multifamily project, parcel ID 02-00761, Mitchell Davenport, Clement, GP Holdings LLC agent for Patel and Modi, Inc., owner. Again, Ms. Thompson.
Yes, sir. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Again, this is a rezoning request from the existing Forest Agricultural to Medium Residential. The applicant's requesting to rezone a 10-acre portion from FA to Medium Residential, proposing to develop a 72-unit multifamily apartment complex, which is one of the permitted uses in the MR zoning district. This is the zoning map and location of this property. There are nearby multifamily sites within half a mile, Abington Woods and Fox Creek Landing. The overall parcel this is located on is 26.79 acres. The rezoned project site is 10 acres. This is the layout plan that was shown at the April 13 Mainland Planning Commission meeting, and you can see the entrance of the conceptual site plan was on to Bell Cut Off Road. Due to traffic concerns, the county engineer review stated that the applicant will have to provide a traffic study at site plan. They also stated that the applicant needs to get a letter from DOT stating that no improvements would need to be made at the intersection of Bell Cut Off and Highway 17. During the planning commission meeting, commissioners as well as members of the public expressed concerns about traffic. Concerns were also stated about potentially negative impacts to the area's drainage and property values. The Mainland Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend denial, that you deny this application. Mr. Davenport has submitted a revised layout plan. It was submitted on May 4 of this week. As you can see, they have proposed to eliminate the entrance on to Bell Cut Off and have proposed to provide a private access easement and connect directly to US 17. The Board of Commissioners, possible actions are listed at the top of the screen. At the bottom is a possible motion. If you choose to approve this rezoning, that condition is for access and to condition that this property must, this project must access directly to Highway 17. This is the staff report. I'm available, and Mr. Davenport is here, and he actually has a few slides that he would like to go over with you also.
And state your name for the record, please.
I'm Mitchell Davenport. I'm the developer and owner of the proposed development. And I will try to make this really quick and just run through some of the issues that we've had. A picture's worth a thousand words, and that's what the buildings look like. It's an attractive brick and hardy board building, designed for durability. Typical amenity package, we'll typically do a community garden with a picnic pavilion with grills, playgrounds and whatnot for the kids. We also build these under the EarthCraft program, so it's designed with energy efficiency and sustainability in mind, and anything that we can do to help our residents in the long term with their energy consumption and water consumption, we really do go the extra mile to do it. It's a great program, and it does save residents a good bit of money over the long term. But why did I select this site? You know, traffic is always an issue, no matter what community I go to, proximity to goods and services. We're right there at the Walmart, the bank, pharmacy, anything you need is within an easy walk, post office, exit 29 postage is across the street. So we've got the ability to promote walkability. We can, we have access to public transportation through coastal, regional community transport. If I were in, say, the city, that's not available to us. Being in the county gives us that ability to take advantage of that for those that are either willing to carpool or need rides. Access to employment centers, obviously, the port is just up the road, retail and service businesses are an easy hop on 95 either direction. We're right in, just in the vicinity. Access to highly performing schools. Both Satilla Marsh, Rizley, and Glen Academy, their CCRPI scores are above the average, and we want to give kids that are living in these, in our developments, the opportunities to hire, to good schools and the education opportunities that come with that. Adequate utility infrastructure and capacity. I've got letters from Joint Water and Sewer, sewers available. I'm actually going to be providing upgrades in the area with water and sewer. And obviously, adequate ingress egress. I've negotiated with the seller to allow the access to Highway 17. We've done it through an easement, so that, one, we don't have to monkey with a legal description on the rezoning, and DOT, I've visited with them, I can get their initial response, but the actual location of where they want that entrance, you know, I don't get until I submit a full application. So they may want it on one side of, where we have it drawn, they may want it on the other side of the house, they may want us to line, tear down, tear off the garage of the little existing house and have it near, you know, Martin Palmer. So that gives me the flexibility to put that driveway where DOT says. This is the site plan, that the access is actually, actually through an easement as opposed to fee simple, so we have that flexibility to move it. The, you can see five buildings on, with 72 units, 7.2 units an acre. The density allowed for medium residential is 16 units, so I've actually done everything... In the neighborhood, it's just not the case. Property values, I've pulled all the sales. Abington Woods was built in two thousand and fourteen. Our tax map allows you to pull a radius, a half a mile radius. Sales have had an average of a hundred and fifteen percent of the previous sale for those properties that have sold. So the number, the data says that it really isn't hurting property values. I certainly understand the concerns of the neighbors. I can empathize. It's scary when you hear something that is coming, but the reality is, it has been zero impact on, or negative impact on property values. So why should the Board approve this, this request? This request is really consistent with, with a comprehensive plan. It follows the natural progression of zoning with adequate infrastructure available, and workforce housing is a fundamental part of our economic development package. Page twenty-four, the Housing, Envision Glen, talks about housing opportunities, trying to encourage the development of housing options that include affordable housing. A diverse population, compatible mixed uses, allow for innovative residential construction, again, EarthCraft multifamily, sustainability, energy efficiency. Again, housing options on the mainland, encourage affordable housing on the mainland, we're reasonable by permitting increased density and greater variety of residential options. Well, I'm actually cutting the density in half of what's allowed. So as far as suitable locations, close to employment and, and services, incentives, my point here is the comprehensive plan actually goes so far as to, for the county to come up with incentives. Again, I'm not asking for anything, but we have, we obviously have a serious need for housing here. Even in the southwest Glen character area, allow for residential development that offers a mix of housing types, including multifamily, varying densities and prices. Achievement, to do this, it requires zoning amendments as the area is zoned predominantly agriculture, forest agriculture, which would obviously allow, you know, chicken coops and things. So I think we really are trying to be a, a good neighbor. It follows the natural progression of zoning. You can see we've got highway commercial to the north and the east. Obviously, the property to the east is realistically, and its highest and best use is going to be commercial like everything else. This acts as a real buffer to protect the lower density housing and follows that natural progression from more intensive use to less intensive use. This talks a little bit about what we've got there. I really have tried to do what I can to minimize impact. Seven point two units an acre, limited to two stories. There's an adjacent wetland to this site, which effectively reduces the density even more because you, you really can't build on it. I've got some flexibility with the exterior designs, and we've chosen this craftsman style, it's just attractive and it's durable. You can see here's the site, there's the wetlands I was discussing, which is like, you know, it's undevelopable, and it's actually a little bigger. That area actually runs up kind of to the west, a little bit bigger than what the, you see on the plan. But in effect, it's going to reduce the density even more for the area. Workforce housing is part of our economic development. I've visited with our E D A, and they've talked, we've talked a little bit about what they're doing. You know, our E D A has worked really hard to workforce development, workforce development has been a big push. The lack of affordability in our area has pushed wage earners to live in other counties. But also rent overburden is the biggest part of the affordability issue in our community. Obviously, housing prices are up, which push up rents for those that choose to rent them. So it, it's a big issue. We've got a demand for about fourteen hundred affordable units in our community. So this is really a drop in the bucket for a much bigger problem. Again, site plan, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to, to talk about it.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, can, can we take, since the, the flume mouth is the next item on that, can we, can we combine those two items for our public discussion?
I would not recommend that this evening.
Would not for this evening?
Correct.
All right. All right, as a, this is a public hearing, before we start, Commissioners, is there any questions that you might have before we open it to the public? Seeing none, we would take first, is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition to this rezon? If you would come forward and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Gail Owens, and I live out in that area. Years ago, we lived in another state, and they started bringing a lot of development in. My question is, is there an estimate on how many children are going to be needing elementary, middle and high school? And can we accommodate them? The community I was in before had schools that we, the maximum was supposed to be two hundred, and we had four hundred students in those schools. That's not fair to our students either. Has this been looked at? Has it been coordinated?
It's not for us to comment tonight, ma'am.
That is one thing that I would hope that somebody would consider before you put high density in apartments. Well, they're not high density, but you know, if you have a two or three bedroom apartment, what our county commissioners told us in this other state was, we don't know if they're going to bring children. And our schools suffered for quite a while while we tried to catch up. So I want to make sure that our students do have the education that they should have without having to be crammed into hallways, into gyms, on stages like they were in a state that I came from years ago. So that's my biggest objection to that, other than the traffic. Thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, ma'am. And sir, if you'll come forward and state your name.
Yes, sir. My name's Robert Taylor. I live in the area, and I've got a number of concerns like everybody else. You know, the traffic's a concern, things like that. But the main concern I have is, you know, everybody wants to talk about affordable housing until it comes to their backyard, until it affects them and their families directly. And unless you have been in, worked in, or been privy to the problems that can be associated with affordable housing, Section eight homing, Section eight homes, you really don't have a leg to stand on. You know, I've, I've made a career of having to deal with certain things, and the idea of bringing in something that is going to be problematic. You can tell me, you, you've pulled police reports from previous times, all you want, but until that clientele gets in there, until you start seeing the impact on those people who moved out and moved away from more problematic areas, you can't really, you don't have a leg to stand on. I can guarantee you that if you start introducing problems to an area, the, the crime will go up, the, the amount of police callouts will go up, and it will start affecting not only the education system, but it will affect the day-to-day life of the residents who are out there. And nothing against trying to give people a better home, nothing against trying to set people up for them as much success as you possibly can, but you still have to take care of the people who are in the areas and are doing the right thing and are trying to put their, themselves and their families in a better position so that they can grow up more comfortably. Personally, you know, I've got small kids, and I know the problems that can be associated with some of this, this Section eight housing, and that's a major concern for me. And I, I think it absolutely needs to be addressed. You can, you can paint over it, and you can pretend it doesn't exist, but it does exist. And I don't think anybody sitting in y'all's seat or in the auditorium here at all wants that in their backyard. And that's what we're talking about bringing to our backyard. And Mr. Davenport can, he can say it however he wants to say it, but that is indeed the facts of the matter. And it's just, it's going to be tragic to those people who did try to move out to get a little bit further away, still stay in their hometown, still stay within the confines of Glen County, but tried to get a little further away from some issues that we've seen, and then you get, and then you want to have somebody, and you know, we're doing it for profit, let's call it what it is, somebody for profit trying to bring out and put something that's going to be problematic in our backyard. I think that's, I think that would be a travesty, and I think there's better options for us.
Thank you, sir.
Just a question. So what was your name again?
Me, sir? Me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Robert Taylor.
And you said you live in the area? Where do you live?
Fox, Fox Creek subdivision.
In where?
Fox Creek subdivision.
Fox Creek?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Anything else?
Anything else, Commissioners? Anyone else that wants to? Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Okay, yes.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in opposition? State your name for the record, please.
I'm Jeff Kilgore, and I guess I'm a little bit confused. I understood Ms. Thompson to say that at some point someone said that there should be a traffic study done, but I, I didn't hear the study was actually done. You've got the package in front of you. I've not studied it, so I don't know, but if it's unclear to me, I'm guessing it may be unclear to you, unless you've got it. And these other folks who are concerned about traffic, if through the planning and review process, a traffic study was recommended or indeed mandated, then I think we would be, the government would be obliged to provide that. And with regard to Gail Owens' comments about the capacity of the schools and the ability to accommodate the number of children that may come into the area as a result of this development, as you know, the taxpayers funded to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars, a study by Ross Associates, and there was indeed a ordinance drafted for impact fees, which would accommodate and provide for the county to collect in a circumstance similar to this. The funds necessary to expand the schools and, and the infrastructure, the roads, sewer and water. And I would encourage you to take another look at that, since the taxpayers have paid for it, and it's done, and it's ready to be implemented, and that would provide a, a response and a, an answer to Ms. Owens' question as to whether our schools can accommodate the expansion. I don't know if you know that, I don't know that. And so I would appreciate you taking a look at the, the impact fees again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Anyone else that wants to come up and speak in opposition? State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Rick Boswell. My wife and I own the property on one sixty-nine Bell Cut Off Road. And I'd like to discuss, actually, there's four, four points I'd like to discuss. The, I appreciate Mr. Davenport looking at an easement for the entrance to be on seventeen. However, Bell Cut Off Road will still be impacted because we are impacted drastically now. And with four properties on Bell Cut Off Road, people use that as a cutoff. The fire department uses it, which I totally understand, and people use it, speeding is a problem, but putting the entrance on seventeen will not keep people from not going down Bell Cut Off Road. That's just, it's a misnomer, and I agree the traffic study would have to be conducted, but just the entrance right there won't, won't stop things. Number one. Number two, we mentioned the property values. The question came up, you know, a hundred and fifteen percent increase in property values is not pertinent because you can't tell what the increase in property values is around other properties that don't have multifamily homes. So it's a very moot point to say that property values went up a hundred and fifteen percent when a lot of the states right now have properties, or in Georgia in particular, property values are going up a hundred and thirty-five percent. And so I, and I've seen that in our, in, you know, partially how property values have increased. So saying a hundred and fifteen percent is a moot point. There's no way to balance that out. Number three, the, we talked about transient crime. Not quite sure what transient crime is, other than it's not happening in the actual subdivision. However, transient crime can include, and it's not included in transient crime because Mr. Davenport mentioned this at the zoning meeting, what not include is juvenile crime and domestic violence. So those things aren't included in the transient crime numbers, so we don't know and we can't dictate whether or not it's going to impact us crime-wise or not. Transient crime, to me, if it's, if it's happening in the surrounding areas, it's still crime, and if it increases, it's still crime. And that's really all that I've got. I would appreciate if the, if the Commission would look at the, the, the value of the owners that have lived there for years. This piece of property has been in my wife's family for sixty-two years. Her father built this house on Bell Cut Off Road, and it would be very detrimental to the other property owners around there if this were to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell.
Excuse me, let me ask you one more question, too. Of the three lots on Bell Cut Off Road, which one are you on?
The middle, the middle lot.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Stanley Edgy. I live at one eighty-one Bell's Cut Off Road, and that's on the corner of Dusty and Bell's Cut Off, right next to my sister. And the last time we was up here, it's like I said, there's no way that Bell's Cut Off Road can handle any more, more traffic. Mr. Davenport talked about the water, the drainage, that what he was doing out there wasn't going to hurt the people behind us, it is going to hurt it. All that water out there drains to the west, every bit of it. He talked about, it was going, it was going to be convenient for people to go down to the Family Dollar. He didn't mention that they got to cross Highway seventeen to get there, and it's almost a quarter of a mile down there. Then they got to cross the entrance road going into the Family Dollar. If they go to Winn-Dixie, all they got to do is walk across the street. The property lines, like I said before, they're on my sister's corner, they're dead on the money. Down where I live at, on my corner, even the county has got a culvert there in the ditch, and Georgia Power's got a light pole that's sitting in the ditch in front of the culvert. Now they've went and surveyed, and they've moved the property line six foot over into where it's, away from where it's supposed to even be at. Who's going to straighten that out? And another thing, he was talking about he could build these buildings three stories high. I can understand why he wanted to go two stories high because they're so ugly and nobody don't want to see them. Because them's some ugly sawmuguns. And they're cheap looking. I figured he wanted to buy everybody out on Fish, on, on Bell's Cut Off Road. So he would have all of Bell's Cut Off Road to have access. But the people on Bell's Cut Off Road rather have one man mad at them than they had all the neighbors, good neighbors behind us. We think more of the neighbors than that. I just want y'all to think about this. If they were to come in off of Fish Hall Road like he was wanting to in the beginning, Winn-Dixie has two dumpsters out there, the county's got two dumpsters out there, we've already got a buzzard problem there that nobody can do nothing with, and their interest is right where all the buzzards are. So if the people over in this new community misses their ma, their trash on Fridays, what they going to do? They going to run down there to the county and throw more garbage in there and have more buzzards. But there's a bad drainage out there, and we, don't nobody out there want to see them mow the apartments out there. And the crime is bad out there. I was in law enforcement for a long time. Exit twenty-nine is getting worse and worse and worse. With more people in there, it's going to get worse. Thank y'all. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Edgy. Anyone else that wants to come up and speak in opposition?
Hi. My name's Linda Carter, and I live at 153 Bell Cut Off Road. And Mr. Davenport had originally was going to put the road right behind my property, by my fence. Bell Cut Off Road is so busy now, and 17, you take and put that many people going out at 17, that driveway will be so close to our road. And the school traffic, I go to Satilla Marsh every day. When you go to go out, the line is backed up where you go to turn to go to Satilla Marsh. If you got traffic coming out there, too, it's going to be awful. It's going to be awful. And as far as the property, he was stating having all these little businesses so they can just go and walk. I live right, I mean, it is at my back door, okay? I want to, if, if y'all decide to improve it, I want a fence up. I have nothing against people, you know, going to the store, but I don't want my yard to be a pass-through to go to Wind Dixie, Family Dollar, or whoever, wherever they want to go. But I'm telling you, 17 is awful traffic. And if you put two driveways and they're coming out that close together, you're going to have a problem. About six years ago, I was rear-ended and my car totaled trying to turn into Satilla Marsh off of 17, okay? So that area, and like I said, Bell Cut Off Road, it's like a pass-through. If you're going to 17, you're going to 82, backing to, the neighborhood, I mean, it's fine, but the traffic's getting so bad. And the turnoff, when you turn off 17 going down Bell Cut Off, it's not wide enough. We have a camper. It almost went in the ditch one day trying to turn on there. If you've got somebody in this lane, and you got us trying to pull in with a camper or anything else, there was a truck went in the ditch one day because it's not wide enough. You got big old trucks from Southern Hardware, you got big old trucks from Wind Dixie. Anyway, it's your decision, but like I said, it's, it's not good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And state your name for the record, please.
Kerry Collins. I live at 132 Fox Creek Boulevard in Fox Creek Estates. Good evening, board. To Mr. Davenport's point, he had mentioned high-performing schools. My family and I moved out to the exit 29 area about eight years ago. I had three children that have come up in that area. One of them's graduated Glen Academy already. I have two that have come through Satilla Marsh Elementary, now going through Rizley. And the reason we had moved there in 2013 was because of high-performing schools. I believe in growth. Exit 29 absolutely needs positive, well-thought-out growth. I'm not arguing that. But it needs to be growth that is best for all, or even most, not just for a select few. A question I know other people have brought up, and it needs to be addressed, is how many children will this 72 multifamily unit bring into our community's neighborhoods? If we use the conservative estimation of only 1.93 children per dwelling, up to roughly an average of 2.5 children per dwelling, which is roughly the national average, we're talking about an influx of about 140 to 180 school-aged children into that area who will be attending the schools there. That is a massive surge to our already overtaxed educators. As a brief example, Satilla Marsh Elementary School was overcrowded already several years ago. This is in part to another Section 8 development that was built in the late fall of 2015, Abington Woods. It was a 56 multifamily project, which many of us didn't even know about until they had already broke ground on it. Shortly after Abington Woods was open, there was a noticeable decline in the school's performance ratings based on data gathered from the Georgia Best Schools ranking systems. Prior to the construction's completion in mid-2015, Satilla Marsh was ranked at 85.2% above Georgia's best schools. The same time the following year, in mid-2016, with a new influx of the students, the school's rankings dropped to 74.4% and additionally to 64.1% the following year in 2017. The test score averaged amongst the students at the school in 2015 prior to the construction was 82.04, which fell to 70.19 in 2016, and then to 59.68 in 2017. This is probably and most likely due to the school and the county being ill-prepared to handle such an influx. Certainly, the teachers and staff attending this school were probably ill-prepared for that high demand on the system. I can personally attest that our children saw a drop just because the teachers were overtaxed. You know, what I would ask is, should our students that are there have to pay for the cost of progress? Currently, Satilla Marsh Elementary is having to operate out of modular buildings already on the number of students they currently have. Will the county build on to the additional structures at Satilla Marsh and Rizley Middle School to accommodate an even larger surge in students? Who will have to absorb the cost of that? I'm also concerned about our teachers and current students this year after trying to regain from this ongoing pandemic. Teachers are overburdened as it is, and the student-teacher ratio would increase, degrading the quality of individual instruction. There is also the problem of student safety. There really hasn't been, as far as I know, a true DOT study done this local area to fully grasp what the effect of putting that structure in the proposed locational mean. Highway 82 is a speed zone. I think everybody here that's out there kind of knows that. Highway 17 isn't much better, and good luck trying to turn left out of Highway 17 from Southport Parkway, which is where the schools are located, in the morning after you drop your kids off. It's, it really needs a light there already. I've personally seen numerous wrecks at this location because they need a light to offset the natural flow of traffic at certain times of the day. And again, will the county have to absorb the traffic costs at this location, as well as maybe additional considerations at Bell Cut Off Road, which runs right by that cutoff, that proposed cutoff would run right beside the fire station there, which I think would, it would probably prohibit emergency vehicles from being able to exit out there safely. Additional buses may have to run for the children, or we would have to put in sidewalks in the area for Highway 17 for people to get to and from the schools, for people to be out there. It's just, it is unsafe to walk on Highway 17. People are walking on the shoulder of the road, on the curtilage, and just really, it really needs some kind of crosswalks, sidewalk systems. That cost would have to be inherent there. I do believe people should have access to affordable housing, but there are probably other locations better suited to handle such instantaneous growth. This needs to be evaluated, moved to an area that is better suited for such an endeavor. Again, should our students have to pay for the cost of progress? I am against the building, or against this and the rezoning, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I think we have time for one more in opposition.
Yes, my name is Brenda Williams, and my husband's Gary. We live on Dusty Lane. One question I have, and I brought this to the planning committee last time when we were up here. Mr. Davenport says there's going to be 72 residences in there. And if you take 72 and you have two people, adults, and each one, that's 144. He said all he had was 144 parking places. Where are all these people going to park? Everybody has kids these days that drive. I mean, where are they going to park? Southern Hardware has a problem right now with parking. They park all the way down, halfway down Bell Cut Off Road on the side, which makes it hard. When, when they have trucks in that they come and to deliver stuff or pick up stuff, they have to back out in the road, sometimes blocking the whole road. Are these people going to allow, are y'all going to allow them to park on the side of 17 because they have no room to park? I feel like that's the biggest issue, or one of them. Plus, like, like we said, our property values and stuff, because we worked hard to have our, you know, neighborhoods and nice neighborhoods. And I'm not against affordable housing, but when it comes to 17 and the traffic there, I mean, it's like my sister said a minute ago, she almost got killed a while back because somebody rear-ended her trying to pull in to go to the schools. And if you think 200 or more vehicles in that area, it's not going to cause a problem. So I appreciate your time, and I would like for you to consider to cancel, or to deny this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We will let you speak, sir, and that'll be the last in opposition. State your name, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Scott Glisten. I live at 145 Tyson Drive. We've heard a lot of different things, though. The infrastructure for the water runoff, if this, looking at his pic, the photographs, the aerials, has a wetland mitigation plan been in fact with DNR and how that's going to impact that? And the total footprint, so if we're looking at how much water we can handle already, we're a clay base out there, and it just, it doesn't drain, it drains west, and we already flood already. So if you have a thousand-square-foot roof, driveway, one inch of rain is going to generate over 600 gallons. How big is 10 acres going to push to an already existing? And once, by virtue of law, you're not supposed to generate any more, concentrate any more water once it leaves off of your property to your neighbor. So everything out there's going to have to be redone. I mean, the overall cost of this, it's not just a knee-jerk reaction. There's got to be some in-depth studies of how this is going to impact our resources, the natural resources in our people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll stop the opposition. Those that would like to speak in favor of this zoning. State your name again, please, sir.
I'm Mitchell Davenport. I'm with the company. I'm the owner and developer of the proposed development. Let's, let's start with the first thing. Mr. Taylor, who lives in Fox Creek, it's called the Section 8. Now, is everybody here familiar with how tax credits work and the difference between tax credits and project-based Section 8? Okay, so we don't need to go through, through that exercise. I understand, and I, I have to deal with this issue day in and day out. You know, the old 1970s project-based Section 8 created pockets of poverty. And from those pockets of poverty came issues. One of the reasons the tax credit program has been so successful is we set the rent, the tenant pays the rent, and it's designed to be affordable for people that work and live in our community. So, you know, and I can argue this until I'm blue in the face, but it, you know, the old, it's a stigma, I have to fight this battle every day, but the old project-based Section 8, where 100% of the units are collecting rent from, from the government. You know, there's a reason they've gone to housing portability and the tax credit program to create a variety of housing choices. This is also mixed income. So we've got market rate units, units at 50% of the area median income and 60% of the area median income. So I've done, I've, I've developed, I've been involved in 37 of these developments. I'm an owner in 17. We do this all the time, and they're successful. If I had issues like this, if, if there was crime everywhere, if I were flooding everybody's neighborhood, I can assure you, I wouldn't be standing here in front of you in my own community where I live with my family. Because when there's a problem, I've got to go address it. You're all business owners here, are involved in businesses, and when you have problems, we have to deal with it. And I do the same thing. Now, to answer the first question, as far as the schools, as part of the zoning application, the schools were given an opportunity to comment, and they did not. So the second issue, as far as the traffic, the traffic study, which will be, was requested to be done, is that site plan. That way, if there are any require, any upgrades that need to be done to the area to Bell Cut Off or that intersection, back when I actually was planning on doing the entrance on Bell Cut Off, to address those. And that way, if it needed to be done, it was going to be done at my expense. And I understand that. And I'm happy, and I'm more than happy and willing to do that traffic study. Secondly, the first time I heard about traffic on Bell Cut Off, I was expecting like it was going to be trying to get, you know, on or off St. Simon's, or trying to drive through Atlanta, downtown Atlanta. So I went out there between 7:00 and about 8:30 in the morning, a couple of times now, to see. Now, there are a lot of cars at that time in the morning going back and forth in either direction. Whoops, excuse me. And what I saw was, actually, a lot of times, the same minivan goes by, goes, turns, comes, and then comes back up Bell Cut Off. And it's people that aren't even necessarily coming up to the corner from Dusty Lane and turning in, but people coming off of 82, cut through Bell Cut Off, and then line up and make a right-hand turn. In the hour and 15, 20 minutes, hour and a half I was there, guess what the most number of cars that were queued up to turn right on 17 were? Four. So, you know, maybe I was just there on good days. Look, I, I got, I have no reason to make this up. I mean, I went out and spent my time, I was out there at 6:30 waiting on traffic to come. Four. So I think we can, we can address the traffic issues. I can address drainage. I mean, engineers can do that. We can, we can make the water flow the right way. We can store it, and we can address wetlands. Because actually, you notice my site, actually, site plan actually stopped short of the wetlands so that I don't impact them. Again, this is, I do this for a living. I'm sensitive to these kinds of things. I'm as security-conscious as anybody. My developments, the developments I showed you pictures of, there are cameras, there are two cameras at the, at the front and rear of each breezeway on that development. If somebody comes in, I can see, if somebody drives down the street in that, in the parking lot, I can tell what kind of car it is, what color it is. If somebody walks into the building, I see their face.
And Mr. Davenport, you have about one minute left.
Certainly. So I'm as security-conscious as anybody because I have a lot of liability with it. And I want to make sure that this is a safe place where people want to live. But finally, people get the impression that we're going to build this, this housing, and people from Atlanta are going to come all of a sudden move into it. The people that live here live in our community. These kids already go to school. Again, I told you, rent overburden is the biggest problem in our community. Someone has rented a house that they really can't afford. So their kids are doing without, they're doing without those resources. Well, I provide something that is safe, decent, and affordable so that they can get this. And these are the same kids that are already enrolled in these schools. This isn't, again, I'm not going to build this, and people are going to come from, from Atlanta to fill it up. So, but again, as, as far as the school ranking changes, Mr. Collins forgot to mention that the actual calculation for CCRPI scores changes frequently. So, you know, it actually jumped a tremendous amount this past year. But anyway, that's, I think I've really tried to address everybody's concerns. I'm really trying to be a good citizen and provide quality housing for those people that, in our community, that get up and go to work every day. And I think it's unfortunate that, you know, wage earner gets treated as a second-class person. Appreciate if you have any questions, please let me know.
I do have a couple of questions.
Certainly.
How many units have you built and operated like this?
Close to 2,000. Little over 2,000.
And in this particular project, are you the majority?
Yes.
Principal?
Yes, sir.
And out of those units, how many of those have involved the Section 8?
I don't own any project-based Section 8 developments. Everything I have is tax credit.
All right.
Thank you. You're welcome.
This would be like the same thing that's on Norwood Street that Mr. Gross did?
Same program. And Abington, Abington Woods is just up the street. There, those are tax credit developments. It is not a, a project-based Section 8 development.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor? To speak in favor of this rezoning? To speak in favor of this rezoning? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on this, and Commissioners, it's back to you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would like to address a few of the concerns that were brought up from the staff point of view. I appreciate Mr. Davenport taking care of a lot of those concerns that were brought up. I won't reiterate those. I will go back to the slide to show you all. I know there was a question about Section 8 in the area and whether or not it impacted property values. Oops, I'm going the wrong way, y'all. Let me go back the other way. Abington Woods is the same style tax credit project as this one. It's 56 units constructed in 2014, and the property taxes that Mr. Davenport cites is including this. Again, we do send the schools notice of every time we have a project that will increase students in their different schools, and we did not hear with any concerns from the school board. And projects, our county code requires that projects have to take care of the stormwater burden they create. They do not have to take care of existing stormwater issues. So Mr. Davenport is correct that this property is designed to not increase runoff from the vacant property that's there today. He is not required to improve the county system that he's coming into. Again, the traffic study is required at site plan if this project is approved, and Mr. Davenport will be responsible for any onsite and offsite traffic improvements that are necessitated by his project. So I just wanted to add that for your information.
Would a traffic study be required?
Yes, sir. We have said that one's required at site plan and anything it indicates, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Commissioner.
The question was, will a traffic study be required?
Yes, sir. At site plan and any improvements it indicates because of the increase in traffic are required to be put in at the developer's cost.
Any other questions?
Ms. Thompson, the parking question that was brought up, are they are correct in the number of spaces that are designed, meet our code requirements?
Yes, sir. Our required parking spaces are based on the number of bedroom units.
And we're within those ordinances, correct?
Yes, sir.
There was another concern about security through somebody's yard there that lives on Bell Point Cut Off Way. What about a fence?
Yes, sir. We can definitely ask the applicant to construct a fence. There's some natural vegetative buffer that already exists along Dusty Lane and in that area, and so staff did request that all that remain to maintain the current visual buffer that the vegetation provides. I'm not going to speak for Mr. Davenport, I assume that he would be happy to install a fence if it would help provide a sense of security in that area and make sure people don't trespass to get to other locations.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Then at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application ZM 4642 with the following conditions. Any multifamily resident uses within the area of rezoning must have direct access to Highway 17, either by use of private access easement or by future property acquisition. Access to Dusty Lane and Bell Cut Off Road shall be restricted to emergency vehicle and facility maintenance uses. Also, may I add that fencing would be required along Bell, the residences between Bell Cut Off Road and the development.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All, any other discussion?
One question. Could you modify that? So it would be 10-foot fencing, as you know, we've talked about a lot of things, but on the other side of 82, just up the road just recently, we dealt with a neighborhood and an RV park, or, you know, mobile home park and RV, and with a lot of density issue. And one of the things that we did was raise 10 feet, either solid or screened, a little Would you consider that?
I have no problems considering it. Ms. Thompson, is there, is that correct? We did a 10-foot fence in that particular area?
I will confirm that. If you would like the condition to be the same type of fencing as on that project, we'll make sure that that's what it is.
Sure. I have no problems with that. Mr. Attorney, how do you want me to do that?
If the Commission's okay with it, I think your modification of that motion and then modification of the second would take care of that.
If I get to restate all that, is what you're saying?
Not the entirety, but just modification with the same type of fencing as the prior project or the other project referenced.
Gentlemen, I would like to make a modification to my motion to approve the application of ZM 4642 with the following conditions as listed. The additional condition that was added to the motion, which is a modification, is to add fencing between the development and the housing on Bell Cut Off Road to match the fencing that was approved in the previous development in that area, which was, we believe, to be a 10-foot screening.
Second. A motion and a second. Any other discussion on this matter?
Just one other.
All right.
I'm going to be supporting this because one of the things is that we need affordable housing. In fact, it was interesting that the Planning Commission voted, and two of those proponents that live, that are on that board have told me continuously in meetings that the number one thing that we need is affordable housing in our county. Section 8 is not what it used to be anymore. They have changed the rules, people probably don't know that. So it's not Section 8 housing anymore, it is a tax credit, and it is an important part of the development of our county and for our labor force that's here. I just want people to understand that there's no longer Section 8 housing as we used to know it. It's not, it's to blend in. And some of the projects that the city have done inside the city are quality housing developments, it all depends on the people that run it. And I've studied Mr. Davenport pretty well in his history, that's why I asked him so the public would know his experience. This is not a one- or a two-time project that he's done and his management companies. And it's really, in the past with housing projects, is how the management runs that property. It's not about the quality of people. All the people that live in this county prove themselves by personal choices to be good citizens, outstanding citizens, or citizens that are undesirable. But in a property management situation, it depends on the property management company. Those are just some of my thoughts there.
Any other discussion? Having a motion and a second, then, all in favor of the motion, please raise your right So that's five, four, those that are opposed? The motion carries, five to two. Thank you. Next item is ZM 4642, 145 Bell Cut Off Road, Flume Amendment. Consider a request to amend the future land use map category of a 10-acre portion of 145 Bell Cut Off Road from the low-density residential flume category to the high-residential flume category. The applicant is submitting a companion rezoning application in order to construct the proposed 72-unit multifamily project. Parcel ID 02-00761, Davenport, Mitchell Davenport, Clement GP Holdings LLC, agent for Patel &amp; Modi Inc., owner.
Good evening, Commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. As you're aware, this future land use map amendment request is in direct relation to the rezoning you just voted on. It is to amend the future land use map from the low-density residential that it is to high-density residential. Again, as Mr. Davenport told you, medium residential is 16 units per acre, and this is coming in approximately half of that. However, it's low-density currently as the future land use designation. This is the existing zoning map. This is the existing future land use map showing it as low-density residential. The comprehensive plan states on page 81 that the land use category of high-density is appropriate for multifamily uses, such as the one that's been proposed by the applicant. It also states that high-density residential land uses are generally appropriate in transition zones between low-density residential and commercial areas. And as you saw on that zoning map, the red is commercial located along the interstate, and this is the transition area stepping down to the single-family residential zonings in the area. So this would be the proposed future land use designation. The Mainland Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend that you all deny this future land use map amendment. Here are your possible motions. Approve the amendment. Approve the amendment with any modifications or conditions. Continue the hearing, remand, or deny. I'm available if you have any questions. Mr. Davenport's available if you have any questions. Staff would encourage you to approve this future land use amendment based on the decision you just made on the zoning application request, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Commissioners, anything before we go to the public hearing? Then, anyone that wants to come forward and speak against this Flume Future Land Use Map Amendment, please come forward and state your name to speak against. Seeing none, hearing none, those that would speak in favor of the future land use map change, if you would come forward and state your name. Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on this item. Commissioners, is there any discussion here?
Just one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Davenport. You are making an investment in our community which is badly needed. On the other hand, you hear the concerns of all the neighbors around you. I just want you to know that this commission will be looking for you to set an example and a high standard and a good relationship working with those neighbors. Will you do that? Thank you.
If, if there's no other comment, then I will entertain the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the proposed Flume Amendment decision.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the Flume Amendment, ZM 4642, please raise your right hand. I didn't see this way. Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you. Item number six, ZM 4609, the Tinted Tide Rezone. Consider a change of zoning request from one-family residential R6 to conservation, preservation, to planned development district PD for property located at 1447 Ocean Boulevard, St. Simons Island. The applicant is proposing uses to include residential, art studio, art classes, limited retail, and other uses specified in the proposed planned development text for the property. Parcel ID 04-03338, 04-03339, and 04-3340. Erica Gilman, applicant and agent for Class Bar, owner.
Good evening. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Again, this is a request for a rezone from R6 and conservation, preservation, to a planned development text to allow for a mixed-use residential above art studio with classes and limited retails on the ground floor. The future land use map has this area as medium-density and coastal marshlands. Again, this is to include residential, art studio, art classes, limited retail, and other uses. The applicant plans to utilize the existing house for the art business on the ground floor and the residence on the upper two levels. The draft planning development text has been included in your packets. This is the aerial of the property in question. This is the plat of that area and site plan. This is a zoomed-in picture of that site plan. As you can see on here, the location of the existing structures and the proposed parking. Here are the tree canopy requirements for the St. Simons Island Tree Preservation Ordinance. This is the tree plan. Here are photographs of the property as it exists today. At the April 20th Island Planning Commission, they held a duly notice public hearing and voted unanimously seven to zero to recommend to you all that you deny the request of this rezoning application. Here are your possible actions based on the zoning ordinance. This is a public hearing, I'm available, and Ms. Gilman's available if you have any questions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions before we go?
Pam? Yes, sir.
On commercial square footage, it determines parking, right?
Depending on the type of use, yes, sir.
Is there enough parking here?
They are proposing enough parking, yes, sir.
Looks like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10 spaces?
Yes, sir. 11, I apologize, 11.
Also, Pam, the aerial, could you go back to that right quick? What's the closest property to it?
There are two parcels immediately, it looks to the right of that, and then all of the area around it, those three lots are surrounded by marsh.
Are the lots to the right, are they buildable lots?
They're, they're platted lots, we haven't had anybody turn in, you'd have to do a study of how much is upland and could be usable, so it would depend, but they will be...
But nobody lives there now, right?
No, sir.
This is raw land.
And what's across the street?
Mr. Smith, would you like to get up and help me with the staff report?
A lot of residential properties across the street, there's no commercial across the street, it's all residential. A lot of neighbors, and I will address that.
That, that was meant in jest, but I do appreciate Mr. Smith's assistance. Yes, sir, it is across the street from residential.
Okay.
And Ms. Gilman is here to explain what she wants to do and how she proposes to use the property and plans she makes to accommodate and offset any negative impacts of that business.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Erica Gilman, I'm the applicant and the owner of the Tinted Tide. I wrote down most of what I wanted to say here because I want to make sure I don't forget anything, so I apologize in advance to be looking down a little bit. As a brief introduction, my husband and I moved here in 2017. After leaving the military, we decided we wanted to settle somewhere. I have parents that were also prior military, so we did a lot of moving, and we picked this as our forever home. So we were really excited to move here, and I fell in love with pottery painting when I worked at one in college. And so I wanted a family-friendly business that I could bring my son with me to work, and so we made that happen. In Redfern Village, we were there for about three years prior to the pandemic, and we really, we just fell in love with this area. We settled right in, we got to know people through our jobs. My husband works at the fire department, and of course, I met most of the people that I know through my job at the pottery studio. We obviously went through the Island Planning Commission last month, and my lack of experience did have some impact, I believe, on the final results because we did not have a chance to come right out and say everything that we had planned. And for this particular application, our business and our business model and the size of our business is really important, and I didn't necessarily get a good chance... of our business is really important, and I didn't necessarily get a good chance to say that last time, so I cannot fault the IPC for their unanimous decision because they were not given all of the facts. So I want to have a chance to give you all the facts here tonight, as well as some of the people who I know have concerns. I also, I don't know if you all got a chance to see it, but we did address a lot of these concerns in a letter to the residents across the street. We sent it to Hodnet Cooper, and they said they would be in charge of getting it out to the residents, so that was also put on the record for you guys. So something that is really important to me is nature, because there are a lot of cognitive effects on the benefits of being out in nature, but also, I have a psychology degree, so that tied into my art, my love of art, and they both provide the same cognitive benefits. And so I think that this particular property with the view of the marsh gives an awesome opportunity for us to combine the two things and really help benefit the community and the things that we are all about at our business. So we know that we would be an asset to this area, especially because of the volume of vacation rentals that are there. And I know that there are naturally some concerns with the people who have properties across the street, but I can promise you, if you walk inside of that house as it stands right now, it is in dire need of tender love and care, and that's what we want to give it. We want to repurpose it, and we know that there is such opposition to knocking things down, rebuilding them, especially on St. Simons, because it causes, you know, you just lose the charm essentially, but we want to rehabilitate this. We don't want to tear it down. We want to put a little bit of love into it and make it work for what we need. So we think that doing that will provide all of those high-density vacation rentals, the Grand, the Beach Club, a lot of those people who live right there on East Beach that rent out those areas, we're talking about an activity they can walk to. This isn't something they have to drive to. They can bring their golf cart, they can drive bikes or ride bikes. They can just get to us really easily with us being in this location, whereas prior, we would have to go through Redfern or through the roundabout to get to Redfern Village. So our last normal year as a studio, 2019, obviously 2020 was a little bit different for everybody, but 2019, we had an average of vehicle traffic from two to five cars per day, so we're talking per day, not time, but these cars transport majority families, so we're talking about multiple people can ride in a car together. That's our main client base is families, so we're not talking about, you know, loading up with a bunch of single-person vehicles. These 11 parking spaces, I feel like is overboard for what we typically use. So I definitely think that's important to mention. So another thing that I want to stress is I know that there has been concerns about spot zoning and things that people would consider to be spot zoning. This particular structure is 900 feet on the north side of Ocean Boulevard to the next local commercial building, and in the other direction, it's about the same distance to the next house on the same side of Ocean Boulevard. If you look on the south end, where you're talking directly across from this property, you have 530 feet, according to the GIS map, to the nearest building, the vacation rentals, the Grand, the Beach Club, things like that. And then diagonal across the street is about 250 feet to the next neighboring property. So there's nothing touching these property lines, and those two lots that you see up there on the map, those are under contract. We have this property under contract along with those, so they are all encompassed together. They're not buildable for the most part. That site plan that you saw with the parking extending is the only thing that will extend across those two lots. The land is minimal there. So something else that I would like to mention is that we fell in love with every part of this island, especially the nature. So when we were looking at this property, the first question we asked ourselves is how can we keep this environmentally sustainable? So we called, we are big supporters of some of the local, I can't name drop here, but we support some of the local conservation projects, and we called them right away, and we said, what can we do to make sure that this stays sustainable, because we are obviously very close to the marshland, and it's important to us to keep this safe. Our business in general is not a high-waste-producing company. We don't, we're not large, we don't produce a ton of waste, we recycle most of our stuff, and we wash out paint trays and things like that, so it's very little waste. But they also mentioned that we could do permeable pavement, so we optionally provided permeable parking so that those paved-in spaces would be permeable to avoid the runoff issues. We provided, I think, about 50% of the tree canopy is preserved. So we tried to make sure that we were doing our part with this building. And again, we're not talking about digging up things and rebuilding anything on the property. We have a very small, about 300-square-foot addition off to the side, and there's already an existing porch there that we would like to screen in and provide as our painting Just want to make sure I didn't forget anything. I said I was going to read, and I totally went off of written words here. As unique as our application is, we believe that we're heading in the right direction. I know many of you are very familiar with the envisioned glen, all the sections of envisioned glen, but specifically mixed use in our case. I am going to read this part because I know that I'm going to forget. We followed existing ordinances to fit this project into the appropriate box for what we have right now, and we know that that's going to change in the near future, but what we were given right now, we followed the guidance of the IPC member, Robert Usery was the one who guided us towards picking a PD. We worked closely with Planning and Development, or Community Development, rather, to choose the PD, and we tried to limit down that PD so that we're not asking for some open-ended commercial project here. We don't want this to be anything except for our art studio. We don't want, you know, anything else crazy going in there. We want to live above our art studio so that I don't have to pick between spending time with my family and working, because I love them both. So something that I would also stress to the people who are probably here and will stand up during the opposition period is that a PD text, if you're unfamiliar with it, limits the uses so that if this were to ever change, that someone would have to come back through this entire process with all of you gentlemen to receive a different use. So we tried to make that as specific as possible, and I hope that you guys could see how much we put into that. We pretty much had to learn how to do all of this. It's like foreign language. I have a lot of respect for people who can store all that information in their heads, but I have dedicated countless hours to this project. We have been under contract for it for about seven months, and in the meantime, our business and our personal lives have been completely on hold, and we truly believe that this is the best spot for us to go. Because of the uniqueness of this property and the uniqueness of what we're asking for, there is nothing like this on the island. We cannot just pick up and go somewhere else to do this project. This, where it falls on this beautiful little blend line between local, commercial, and residential, is where something that's mixed use with residential and commercial belongs, especially something as small as our studio. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, those-
I have one. Everything on the west side of Ocean, all the way down to the intersection, what's the name of that road, Ken?
Arnold Road.
Arnold Road. It's commercial, is that correct? And across the street is entrances to condominium and apartment complexes, is that correct also?
Yes, sir, and those are primary-
There's no single-family residence. I mean, for the most part, it's mostly entrances to condos or apartments.
Yes, which according to the GIS-
It's like single, like I just see this drive here, like a single drive that goes into multiple family complexes.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to address that, Ms. Thompson?
I'm sorry, I was trying to see if Mr. Kim could pull up soon and out-mat the area so that she could see what was around it.
But everything, but everything on the other side is commercial, except for that one piece of property. But it's, but there's nothing but marsh between those properties?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's no neighboring-
I just wanted to be clear on that, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Those that would like to speak in opposition to this rezone, please come forward and state
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. I live on St. Simons Island. I was hoping one of the folks who wrote to the planning board or to the, to Community Development would come up to speak to this, and maybe someone will. After hearing you approve the earlier application that had been turned down by the Mainland Planning Commission, I feel bad about what might happen here. I'm only going to talk about one page in the 71 pages of documents in your report. And as I speak about this one page, I'm going to try to be as sympathetic to the applicant as possible, because I do not believe the applicant has been well-served by the Community Development or Planning Staff. And let me start with what is required of the applicant in terms of explanatory material. Justification for request on page two of the application form. The applicant is supposed to explain how the request, quote, "would be in harmony with the character of the neighborhood because." Now here, we have three important words: harmony, character, and neighborhood, and those words are abstract. In other words, the applicant is being asked to say almost anything, but the applicant needs to know what the character is and what would be harmonious. I don't think this is a harmonious application, and the applicant's verbiage in answer to that question, to that charge, that challenge, ignores the character of the neighborhood because, she writes, "no immediate neighboring properties." Now, there are no properties abutting directly on either side, no residential properties on either side. That's because this is a lot that is an anomaly. It's in the middle of a marsh. It is a lot that perhaps should never have been built on in the first place, but it happened, that was a long time ago, and we cannot get into that. So she writes, however, "the proposed project would be harmonious with the commercial properties located at the nearest intersection of Ocean Boulevard and Arnold Road." I say, what she is proposing would be much nicer than some of the things we have at that intersection, except of course for crab daddies and other fine restaurants. She is then required to say, to explain how this application, this project, would not be detrimental to property or persons in the area because the applicant does not address that charge, doesn't answer that, and the planning staff, the Community Development staff, did not help her. They did not read what she wrote and say, said, "Well, you know, you haven't really gotten to that. You haven't explained that." Well, it's probably not the perceived purpose of the Community Development Department to help people, except they think they're helping. The applicant says, "Our business will feature the natural beauty of the marsh." Why is the natural beauty of the marsh being commercialized? How, in what way is it part of this, this commercial project? And provide a beautiful and peaceful location for locals and tourists alike to create one-of-a-kind pieces of art with a conservative footprint." Perhaps she means conservation footprint. Footprint, conservative footprint, that's gobble-dee book, and the planning staff really should have helped this neophyte explain the swamp she was wandering into. And I apologize to her, but I've had to sit here and listen to all kinds of stuff that I really didn't want to have to listen to at this stage in my life. So I hope you will make the inappropriate decision and not make a decision because you're mad at me for being so nasty. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else that wants to speak in opposition to this application? State your name for the record, please.
Jane Fraser. I did attend the Island Planning Commission where this was heard, and I did want to, because the applicant has mentioned Robert Usery, Mr. Usery is one of the ones who objected to this application. One of the things that he stated was that this building is underwater at high tide and certainly in the hurricane, he mentioned it was even 10 feet underwater. He objected to the cedars being cut down to make parking spaces, and a lot of objections were raised about the fumes from the kiln. I noticed that that was not mentioned tonight, but apparently there are fumes that come from a pottery kiln, so that's certainly another reason why there was a unanimous vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would come up to speak in opposition? State your name for the record, please.
Jeff Kilgore, and as the, a 12-year member of the Housing Authority and the past chairman, I would like to inform Commissioner Fendig that Section 8's alive and well and it functions just like it always has.
Anyone else that would like to come up and speak in opposition? Anyone else? Seeing none, hearing none? Would anyone like to come up and speak in favor of this application? State your name for the record, please. At the microphone, please.
Addie Mars. How are y'all? Me and my family own Paintin' the Glass, which is on Ocean Boulevard, right down the street of where she wants to buy and build or start her business. We just support artists in the area. Why not? Gives something for us to do, tourists something to do. I think our classes, classes are going to be super small. What, how many people? Six? Four, six, 10? You know, just a small amount of people just to come and paint pottery. She's gone to Orkuthorpe School, and the kids have really enjoyed her classes. She does pop-up shows everywhere. I think she did one at the golf course in Brunswick. People showed up and liked. And why not? We have such good artists around here, and we support each other, and I support her. Super sweet family, and she just wants to live at her house and have her studio. Sounds like a dream to me, I'm jealous. And great location, you know, we can send people down there to her, she can send people to us, and people are concerned about traffic, like, traffic's insane anyways. Like, walking to Ocean Boulevard, I don't know what 12 more people coming out of her driveway is going to do. I mean, we're on Ocean Boulevard to work a crap trap with fiddlers, the barrier, like that. Intersection's cuckoo, and I don't know what, six more people, four cars, eight cars a day? I don't think that's really going to be a difference, and then I know people like at the Grand and Beach Club are worried about traffic, but those are part-time people. They don't even live there full-time, so what's it to them? I mean, they might live there three months out of the year, so if they're worried about traffic, I don't see the big deal if they're not, you know, full-time residents, and I don't know. I support artists, and I support Erica, and I don't think it's that big of a deal. And like you said, people are worried if she resells it, and then any business can pop in there and do it, but if she, if other people that buy it from her have to come and redo this, then you have to prove it or not, so. Say your husband or her husband are in there for five years, they don't like it, it's for sale, and someone wants to do a business thing again, they'd have to come across y'all and be like, oh, can I put my bar in there? Can I put my other thing in there? And you'd have to say yes or no, so I don't know. I think it's something cool. It's something cool to be on our street, and we love it. More businesses around there, the better, and small businesses, so we support it. My family supports it, so I hope y'all support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would come up and speak in favor? State your name for the record, please.
My name's Kevin Higgins. I'm the architect of the project, but I'm also in favor of it, and to address some of the, some of the recent comments, the flood zone, this residence, at some point, the garage on the ground floor was at some point converted to- was at some point converted to a couple bedrooms and a bathroom. And when we first started this project months ago, I had a conversation with Dave Carver at the county, and more recently, last week with Ellis Carter, about the feasibility of, you know, if this does become a commercial ground floor space, you know, what we can do down there. We already have plans, basically just with how she operates her business, we're basically stripping all the walls out down there, just making one open space. There will be some, of course, conversions to the existing bathroom down there just to make it ADA compliant. And that is doable. So, we're actually diminishing walls in areas that could flood. She's talking about, you know, we're discussing floor materials and wall materials and that to mitigate any kind of flood damage if stormwater does come, come up, floodwaters. I'm not sure how much, I'm assuming it flooded during the storm. I don't know how much. I doubt ten feet, but I, but we will address that at the time of the building plans. So, and I'm available for any questions, too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would come up and speak in favor?
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Steve Bristol. I'm a local attorney. I'm also scout master for Troop Two Forty-Eight, Boy Scouts of America, St. Simon's Island. As an attorney, perhaps I should have reviewed this application a little bit more before I came here. I'm just here tonight to shepherd these young men who are trying to get their citizenship and the community mayor badge. One of our tenants is Leave No Trace. And we're trying to get young people to be interested in conserving our natural resources and loving the outdoors. I don't see where this has any adverse impact on the environment more than the current home. And in my humble opinion, anything that's going to get kids and families interested in our environment and loving the outdoors is worth a vote for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would speak in favor? State your name for the record, please.
My name is Joshua Gilman. I am Erica's husband. My wife and I moved here three years ago, sorry. We moved here three years ago after I got out of the military. I started out, believe it or not, as Sea Island Security Guard. Not sure what I wanted to do in life. As I was here for a while, found out that one of the things I wanted to do was be a firefighter. And now I do that. I watch my wife take a dream and turn it into what she's doing right now. We are not trying to commercialize this this island at all. What we're trying to do is preserve it. I'm glad that scout master said something, because in doing these plans, preservation is exactly what drove us into doing this. Now, I heard somebody say that the trees, we are cutting down some trees. But that is to allow people to see the beauty that we see this island is not getting. Because since we've been here, since we've been here, we have watched multiple tourists come and go and never even see the beauty of this island. Being a firefighter and working as a water rescue, I get to see it every day. I get to go on the beaches. But when I stepped in the backyard of that property and saw that people are walking past the marsh and the different animals that are in this different marsh, we want to give them that opportunity by being able to look out the back porch or the back of this business to see what it is that we see, and to keep them coming back. As a county, that's what we want to do. As the island, we want to keep bringing more and more people. We're adding roundabouts because it's becoming so flooded. Sea Island is growing, St. Simon's is growing. And in order for us to grow, not only do we want to preserve what is growing, but we want to show people why they want to keep coming back. So, like I said, I'm just here to speak in favor of my wife, because, I mean, I wouldn't be a really good husband if I didn't. But just to also show you what we see from our perspective. My son, who's about to be four, steps outside, and his favorite thing to do is to look at the birds. So, just wanted to show you that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in favor?
Thank you, commissioners. I just wanted to take a minute to address some of the things that were brought up during the opposition segment. Especially the, I think Kevin addressed most of the things about the flooding already, but after we had the IPC meeting, we did take Robert's recommendation, and we went and we investigated the flooding issue. And like Kevin said, there is much mitigation that would be done to prevent that from happening, as well as we looked into insurance, and it is required by our funding option for us to carry that insurance. So that will be, hopefully, a non-issue. And I also wanted to mention about the kiln. Obviously, my husband is a firefighter, and we would never put ourselves and our son in harm's way. We intend to live above this, and we would treat this property and this house and this project just like our own home, because it will be our own home. We want to treat everybody that passes by with the same respect that we would expect on our property, and we would like to extend that to all of our neighbors. We truly hope to be good neighbors by being here. We do not want to upset anybody, especially any island residents, but rather provide them with something that's useful for them. And also, one other note on traffic is when this area is at its busiest, when people are at the beach, when people are down in the restaurants, those are the opposite times of when we are busy. We are open ten to six during the day. We close, and long after we close, the bars and restaurants pick up. And when it's rainy, we are at our busiest, when people are not at the beach. So we provide an opposite schedule with our business that we hope will benefit the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak in favor? And if you'd state your name for the record, please, sir.
For the record, I'm Darrell Edwards. I'm a former county commissioner. I've lived on Glen Simons in Glen County for eighty-seven years. And I'm very familiar with the property and all the things that have been done in the past. And the things she's asking to do are not impossible things to address her needs. And that's something that needs to be considered. Now, if we're talking about a ten-foot flood tide, I've never seen one in eighty-seven years. Okay? So, we don't need to worry about ten foot, maybe four foot. But ten foot is ridiculous. Secondly, these are young people. They've got a good idea and a good way to present their ideas to the public. And they're not going to be putting a lot of impact on our community in any form or fashion. And if you would, I would appreciate your supporting her in this endeavor and grant her the permission to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would speak in support? Anyone else to speak in support? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, I'll turn the questions back over to you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, Ms. Gilman, would you and your husband come back up to the podium?
First of all, as an old Islander, I welcome new people that have come and found their dream here on St. Simon's. So, I congratulate you on that. Commissioners, just a little background on this. In that property, when you walk in from the garage, the entrance door is on the left side, right? And then when you walk in that entrance door, it opens to an enclosed area and steps going up, right? And then when you go up the steps, hit the top of the steps and turn, you're facing the kitchen, right? And a spring porch on the left, and dining room to the right, and other bedrooms. Sounds like I've been in that house. My personal friends own that house and have for a long time. They're from Germany. I've been in business relationships with them. And so I know that house and that property very intimately. I can approve this. I sent that message out early on. Ms. Thompson will tell you that when she called me to notify me this application was being originally filed. Sent word back, I don't know if she delivered it to you or not, but I did send word that I encouraged you not to pursue this application. That's a single-family residence. The other thing is, when you moved forward, we also talked personally. And my encouragement to you was that I know that house. I know how nice that house is. I know how nice the porch is out there in the evenings, on the west with the sunset. But that I couldn't support this as a project with traffic coming in and out. And I had suggested to you also that you go down the street and maybe find a place where you could sell your wares. And the ladies in the Paintin' the Glass were one of the ones I had in mind, because they're just right down the walk from you. You know, the main thing is the traffic on that road backing. To pull in that road, you pull in nose-first. And to get out of that property, you back out of there. It also has the sidewalk on your side of the street. And in the summertime, there's a huge amount of walking traffic and biking traffic up and down that road. And it mainly concerns safety issues. So, you know, I'm going to make a motion to, as I have been consistently conversing with you, to deny that. But with that, encourage you greatly to buy the house. I know my friends want to sell it, but I think that would be a great place to have your family. It's a beautiful piece of property, and I really encourage you to do it. But I just can't approve the venture on that. So I'll make a motion to deny.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to deny the zoning four-six-zero-nine. Commissioners, is there any other discussion on this?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment. I'm going to vote against the motion, because I support what they're trying to do. Actually, we are trying to promote more of this in my district. If they don't want you over there, come to District Fire. And looking at this, I don't think, I mean, I disagree. I don't think it's going to add, really, to the traffic at all. I have two daycares in my subdivision, which cause more traffic than this. And we get around this. Drop-off time or pickup time, they are part of our neighborhood. Yes, sometimes there's a little traffic jam, but we get around it. And I don't see this causing that at all. I want to see this as enhancing this. And for someone that has stood a post for our country and is a first responder now, I would give you the benefit of the doubt, your family, so.
Any other comments, commissioners?
I'm not a proponent of spot zoning, and this on the surface looks like that. But due to the fact that on that side of the street, mostly everything over there is commercials, there's big gaps between it and condos, like I said earlier, on the other side. And what you're wanting to do with the property, I agree with Commissioner Booker on that. And I would think it would be a tremendous asset to that part of the island to do what you want to do.
Any other commissioner? Okay, what we have before us is a recommendation to deny ZM four-six-zero-nine. All in favor of denying this application, raise your right hand. That is four against those in favor of approving. That is three, four. I'm sorry, but this application is denied. Item number seven, ZM four-six-zero-nine, the Tinitide Future Land Use Map Flume Amendment.
I apologize, Chairman. I was just asking our attorney if we still need to hold this public hearing because of your vote on the most recent one.
I don't think you do.
So, in the event of item number six, ZM four-six-zero-nine rezone being denied, then we will forego the future land use map amendment.
Thank you, commissioners.
We need to make, basically, a motion to deny it.
Well, you don't need to deny it. I think you can just remove it from the agenda, not take it up. But you don't have to actually vote to approve it or deny it.
Based on the now, make a motion to remove the item from the agenda.
Have a motion. Motion and a second, any other discussion? To remove item seven from the flume. All in favor, raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for general business and the consent agenda for the finance committee.
Second?
Typically, we'll make that with the, in that motion, unless there's an item a commissioner wishes to pull. Could you amend your motion?
Make a motion to approve general business and finance unless the commissioner wants to pull an item.
Yes, second. So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That is unanimous. That brings us down to item number thirty-six. Under general business, consider authorizing staff to prepare a letter from the Board of Commissioners to our Soil and Water Conservation Commission District Office requesting that they consider starting the process of authorizing Glen County LIA under a memorandum of agreement to review and approve Erosion, Sedimentation, and Pollution Control Plan. Ms. Thompson?
Commissioners, Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. I don't know if you signed up to see how much Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development, you've been listening to this evening. We discussed several months ago the engineering department taking in local review of erosion and sediment plans in order to speed up the review and be more responsive to developers and residents that want to do work on their property. Currently, it's reviewed by the state, and that can take several months or longer to get through that process. There is a process for us to request that, that we can do it locally. All of the details are in your packet. The long and short of it is if you approve the sending of this letter of request to start that process over the next year, we will be reviewed for our program, be able to start reviewing and shadow review by the state. And then if we follow all the regulations, they will allow us to start doing local review and approval of soil and erosion permits, and that takes about a year. So here is your recommended motion. If you recommend it, we will start, move forward with the process, keep you updated throughout, and hopefully this time next year, become a local issuing authority.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize staff to prepare a letter from the Board of Commissioners to the Soil and Water Conservation Commission District Office requesting that they consider starting the process of authorizing Glen County LIA under a memorandum of agreement to review and approve Erosion, Sedimentation, and Pollution Control Plan.
Second?
We got a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Amen.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number thirty- Item number 37, consider adoption of a resolution supporting the removal of contamination from sites along the US 17 corridor and urging the state government to cause removal of all contamination in the soil and groundwater along the US 17 corridor. Any discussion on that matter? Mr. Attorney, anything that you would add to that?
Commissioners, this is in response to the corrective action plan that was submitted by Hercules and Panova to the state. The public comment period on that ends on the 10th, so if the board were inclined to adopt this, would, this would be sent to the state as part of that public comment period.
Any other discussion on this? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution, wait a minute. Okay, it says, consider, I move to adopt a resolution supporting the removal of contamination from sites along US 17 corridor and urging the state government to cause removal of all contamination in the soil and groundwater along US 17 corridor.
Second? Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 38 was deferred. Item number 39 involves me, so I will recuse myself from that and pass the gavel to the vice chair, Commissioner Fendig.
All right, this is for the Autumn Woods Phase Two Final Plat. To consider approval of a final plat to create a subdivision consisting of 54 lots, Autumn's Wood Phase Two Subdivision. The property is zoned PDR, planned development residential, and located at 5122 Highway 99, Brunswick, Georgia. The parcel ID number is 03-18602, Jackson Survey Incorporated, applicant and agent for Regency Land Group, comma LLC, comma owner.
Yes, sir. Good evening, commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. As you said, this is a request for final plat approval for Autumn Woods Phase Two. This is a subdivision phase that would create 54 lots off of Highway 99. I appreciate Matthew Kent is getting us to the actual final plat itself. It might be the very last sheet. Through final plats, the developer is requesting to bond out this project, which is often done in construction projects. Chris Amos, engineer, provide us, provided us an opinion of probable cost. Our engineering and joint water engineering looked over those probable costs and agreed to it, so the applicant is requesting approval of this final plat with the acceptance of a bond, and the plat does meet all requirements of the plat, so staff recommends approval of this final plat with acceptance of that bond. And Matthew, I apologize, I didn't have this in PowerPoint. If you can go to that very first memo, the proposed ordinance, motions on there.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve application FP 4660 with acceptance of a bond in the amount of $701, $701.20. I noticed there were some non-compliance in there with fire hydrants or something, that'll be processed as we go through the...
Yes, sir. It's interesting when you bond out, they say non-compliant, 'cause they're not actually installed, even though they're bonded out. So, they will be inspected, and then we'll get final as-built before we actually allow any residents to be...
I just wasn't, didn't understand.
Yes, sir, occupied.
Okay. I got the motion now.
Second? There's been a motion to approve and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. That is, I guess, six, four, and one absent.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Mr. Chairman, you can, if you're not too wore out, you can return to your duty.
Mr. Attorney, do we have anything for executive session tonight? Having nothing?
Mr. Chairman, before we, before we adjourn this, I forgot that on the Carfer, page A6, Madam Interim Manager, on A6, District Four has been renamed District Brunson. I appreciate that very much, but for posterity, I would hope that we would, could correct that on the Carfer, and I think it's a good name, but anyway, that's obviously... That's right.
Also, I would like to thank these fine young scouts for being here tonight. It's proud to see y'all wanted to see this and be a part of that. Both of my boys were scouts, both of them were Eagle Scouts, actually, I'm very proud of them, they were Troop 224 over on St. Simons Island. A lot of times, it was a lot of hard work for them, and a lot of times, they used to say, you know, it's, it's tough being a scout, but, and it's hard being a scout, and it's not popular sometimes to be a scout, but one thing they did say, it's very cool to be an Eagle. So, and it looks good on a resume, no matter where you go, when, when an employer looks down and sees a resume and sees that you're an Eagle Scout, it sends you to the top of the list. Just wanted to say that. Thank y'all so much for being scouts.
And I would echo that as well, and as you see tonight, sometimes the Board of Commissioners have to make some very difficult decisions that satisfy some people and upset very much other people. So, thank you for coming and looking at how government works tonight, and being no further business before this commission tonight, we stand adjourned.